Okay, everybody, welcome to April's regularly scheduled board meeting. It is 7:05.
Do I, do we need to do roll call again?
Yep, you'd think after four years I would remember. Can we please have roll call?
Member Amawala, here. Member Jacob, here. Member Miller, here. Member Kelly Nelson. Member Wolfinger. Member Mercer, here. Member Latasha Nelson, here.
Excellent, thank you very much. Do I have a volunteer on the board to read our land acknowledgement?
All right. At Skokie School District 73 and 1/2, we respectfully acknowledge that our school communities are on the lands of the Ojwaye, Ottawa, Potawami, Hochuk, Miami, Menominee, Sac and Fox Nations, and Kikapu Nations, including those members who are in our Skokie and District 73 and 1/2 communities. In District 73 and 1/2, we as students are taking steps, and the board, to disrupt the erasure of Native American people, their histories, stories, and legacies to be students of the land, learning from the original stewards on how to be in the best relationship with the land, air, and water, and to challenge our district leaders, teachers, and staff to create curriculum, instruction, and resources to honor this land and the legacies of Indigenous peoples, including families in our own school district and their current contributions to our society.
Thank you, Ashra. For all those who are willing and are able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now that time for a public comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please go to the mic and introduce yourself. Please remember that public comment is restricted to three minutes, and your comments should be general and not directed to any one individual board member or staff member. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam President, distinguished members of the board, you have to forgive my voice. I'm just getting over an illness. My name is Jake Graham. I'm the branch manager for Pure Bright Janitorial. We clean your schools. I am here tonight to talk briefly about Skokie Schools and the relationship to Pure Bright Janitorial. Back in 2020, the janitorial contract for cleaning services in your schools was taken out to bid, and it was granted to the lowest bidder, who was Smith Janitorial. We were then, Smith took over the contract, and then in early 2022, we were contacted by the district to come in and do some disinfecting services for the schools. As we do this as part of our portfolio, we clean all the U.S. bank branches in Illinois. We clean multiple Amazon distribution centers, Walmart distribution centers, and 40 other schools. And we were asked to actually stick around because Smith wasn't holding up their end of the bargain. Then about halfway through 2022, we were asked to take over the program because of the poor performance of the lowest bidding contractor, Smith Janitorial. Over the last two and 1/2 years, didn't happen right away, but we worked diligently in your schools to put together a great program of hard-working individuals, and that took some tweaking here and there to make sure we had the right people in place that learned all the idiosyncrasies of each building and each classroom and the teachers to know what everybody's looking for. And we were told in 2023 that the district was going to bring the program in-house. And because of the, we said, fine, okay, but because of all the construction work that was going on within the district with the new garage here in the back and so forth, we were asked if we would stay on for one more year. So a year ago, this board, and we thankfully are gracious, decided to grant us a one-year contract. But the business office said, we need something out of you guys. We need more work for less money. Times are tough. So we worked with your Buildings and Grounds Department, Ed Carrigan and Rosa Reyes. We cut out $275,000 out of our operational budget, but while still delivering the same expectations. Service, you know, service matrix were not to be lowered. Got to have the better results for less money. We met that challenge. And with that board contract, there was an option for either a one- or two-year extension if the board chose so. We were notified just a couple of weeks ago that simply because it hasn't been taken out to bid for a while, that our contract was being taken out to bid. I can tell you that just last week, I spoke to Dr. Osborne, your interim superintendent, and that I expressed to him, just like last year, how we wanted to be a part of the solution by cutting costs. If the district renews us, we will lower our costs, our bill rates to the district. We understand times are tough, especially in this environment with tariffs and inflation, everybody asking more and more. We will cut our rates. I stand before you, and if you grant us a two-year extension, we will lower our rates even further. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and of the gallery, you've got a great crew of hard-working individuals working in your schools. They care deeply. Please, don't send us packing. Please renew us. Thank you. We care.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, well, don't forget, you can public comment at the end of the meeting as well. All right, we do not have any correspondence or FOIA requests to present, so on to staff recognition.
I'll start.
Okay.
Sorry, did I steal it from you where you're gonna start? Okay. I just wanted to, and I have said, made this kind of announcement before, but like, I wanted to acknowledge the work that goes on here when a lot of us are not in the school buildings and our children are not in the school buildings. If you look in the agenda, Ed Carrigan has provided in the facilities update, a really good kind of just bullet point list of the work that was going on in our buildings during spring break to prepare that and to make the best use of that down-student time to keep the buildings running. It's really hard to keep these buildings running when they are in constant use, so I really applaud all of the facilities, staff, in making the best use of those times when students aren't available.
I want to give two general thank yous. Number one, for the teachers who have had such a great attitude getting us through these last seven weeks of school and making sure that the kids are still excited about school because we know that we all kind of dial out towards the end. And definitely, I wanted to thank you guys for the work that was done on the voter day where the kids were at home. I think that everything was done very well, and I think because you come with a good attitude, our kids have a better attitude, and so, thank you.
So this is gonna be my last chance to do staff recognition at the board meeting, so if you'll indulge me. This is. I have a list of 49 individuals who have taught or worked on an individual basis with my children since 2017. I'll compose myself. I really hope it's comprehensive, and I do apologize to anyone who I've left off. I have paragraphs of nice things to say about every one of these people, but here's what you all have in common. You have helped me and Sarah raise our children.
Sorry.
With love, patience, and expertise. You've helped my children learn to read and write and subtract, find a way to get back into the green zone, which I need to do right now. I'm in the blue zone. How to advance themselves, how to advocate for themselves, how to speak different languages. Frankly, I'm in awe of all of you, and I simply cannot say how much you have meant to me and to Sarah. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything you've done for us. So here goes, I'm gonna go as fast as I can. Stephanie Anderson, Melissa Arkin, Nikki Barnold, Michelle Beatrice, Emma Bogdanoff, Ida Borges, Katie Chalmers, Christine Clark, some of these people are gone, Elena Coggan, Chip DiStefano, Stephanie Dickstein, Amanda Dunnekin, Kim Durbin, Bethany Fagan, Tori Gomery, Reed Gettleman, Beth Glazer, Catherine Gormley, Sean Gormley, Erin Gregg, Erin Hamilton, Sarah Hampton, Abby Harris Ridker, Laura Caston, Amy Keiper, Amy Kelly, Persephone Kelly, William Macbeth, Claudia McCracken, Diane McWherter, Zayza Mendoza, Diane Miller, Katie Orleans, Martha Orso, Tim Pong, Nate Pratt, Jeff Preben, Aisha Riaz, excuse me, Deb Schauer, Stephanie Simon, Donna Smith, Lillian Solomon, Susan DiStefano, Angela Sylvester, Joanna Shalefsky, Kathy Vazalopoulos, and Jenny Walsh, John Wash, and Laura Williams. And I just want to say, that's how many people touch our children's lives in a very short amount of time, and, but they're still going. There's gonna be more, so it's just remarkable. It's been an honor to be on the board, serving you, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Follow that?
I don't want to, but, thank you, Louis, that was beautiful. No, I don't want to, but I will. On the theme of last board meetings, we would be remiss if we did not take a moment to recognize Emily for leading our board as board president for the past four years, but also serving on our board for eight years. We have a very small token of appreciation. There are some flowers and a card that we all tried to discreetly sign when I said I forgot my jacket, even though I was holding it. We all have shared some brief remarks for you as well. We all have some brief remarks for you too, Emily, but we'll keep it super short. I'm happy to go first. Emily, I remember when I first spoke to you about possible interest in running for and serving on the board, you were the only woman on the board, which was really cool to see how things have shifted and changed over the years. I'm not gonna say you were a trendsetter, but you probably were. And I think seeing you step in as a board leader just continues to inspire me every day, from when I see you step beyond your board scope to do the right thing for our schools, to when I see you set boundaries and remind all of us what our capacity and job is as school board members. And I was recently asked who my mentor is or who inspires me, and I remember I answered Emily Miller, my school board president. This was a week ago in front of ISB, like 400 staff people, and I was like, I should probably tell her that. So you mean so much to me, and I'm sure a lot of us, you help keep us sane, you help keep us organized, you help keep us on track. I don't know what we're gonna do without you, and I'm sorry that the last few months have been so exciting for you, and I'm excited for the time back that you will have to do all the amazing things you do outside of this role. So thank you.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
But that assumes they're reading their text messages, Busher.
I'm not going after you. You are not, no.
I'm back in the green zone. I'm just gonna quick. Emily, you've been a great leader, and I'm always inspired by your getting us back on track, keeping us, keeping us steady, and your, it's been a pleasure, a pleasure to work with you.
I remember when you were the person who took me out for coffee after I made board and explained to me exactly what I could and could not do. As a member of the board, and that was amazing, and I appreciate your not-too-subtle text messages when I do things that I should not do. But I really thank you for the example you set.
I definitely remember those, you know, what Busher was talking about, those years of being, you know, sitting in the audience at board meetings and seeing you be the only female face up on the board. And, and even when some decisions were being made that I disagreed with, wanting to sort of be like, I wonder what's in her head. But I think what's, you, the mentor line was almost something I wrote in your card because I completely agree with that, in that you're kind of like, like, you know, I mean, you're maybe what, three years older than me, but like, when I grow up, I wanna be you. But like. But I also think, like, I'm not good at receiving feedback when I'm wrong, but you're really good at giving it, and you're the kind of person, no, but seriously, like, you're the kind of person that when you give feedback, positive or negative, you know it's genuine, and you trust it, and it's given with both kindness but clarity, so thank you for that.
Sorry, one more. Vicki wrote something she wanted me to read for you as well. I said, I'll try to read all of it, and she went, well, it's not long. So I'll speed read. Hello from Abraham Lincoln Hotel in Springfield. That's how she started it. I'm sorry I could not be with you this evening, but wouldn't want to miss the opportunity to say thank you to Emily for her commitment to our community and to public education. Throughout the past four years of working closely with Emily, I have not only grown as a school board member, but also as a student of what it means to be a public servant. Emily has led our board through good times and challenges with an unwavering determination to continue to build on the successes and excellences of our district. Emily, thank you for your continued leadership and dedication to our students, staff, and community. Board work is often unseen and unnoticed, but that never stopped you from giving up countless hours of personal, professional, and family time to ensure that the district work continued. Emily, I hope you know how much you are appreciated and admired. Your presence and leadership on this board will be sorely missed. Thank you for helping our district turn in the right direction, and congratulations on all of your accomplishments.
All of that was very unexpected, so thank you very much for everybody and for the flowers and all the lovely words. I leaned over as Louis was launching into his, thank you, and I was like, I didn't write anything down. I have nothing to say. I'll just say very briefly that I was actually asked to serve on the board because nobody was running, and I was a writing candidate, so I just needed one person, I guess myself, to write myself in. And I'm so happy that times have changed and people are running for the board and that we have a healthy democracy and that we have community members who are coming out to serve the community, and I think this most recent election is evidence of that. And I think, you know, we want people running for the school board and sharing their ideas and their vision for our district, and so I'm really, if I feel like there's any accomplishment, it's that there was a contested election this time around, and I think that that's really healthy. Yes, I was the only woman on a board, and I was treated, I'll just be blunt, very poorly while I was on that board, and it was, it was a rough few years, but it was really exciting when we had that next contested election, and it's been just a pleasure working with this board. And, and I really, I mean, yes, it's a lot of work. My husband was really mad that I agreed to be on the school board. We had a fight about it eight years ago. That was eight years ago, and I'm still here. Because it's been, it's been a real pleasure to work with the staff, to work with the superintendents, and, and most importantly, to work with the board through the good times and the hard. So I just thank you for all of this recognition and keep up the good work, and obviously, this is not really my last meeting because we have a whole bunch of other meetings scheduled in the next few months, few weeks, but this is my last official second Tuesday of the month meeting, and I'm very much looking forward to going back to my art classes. So without further ado, let's get this meeting on because we've got a short agenda, want to zip through it all. Staff recognition, if I was Louis, I guess I would have like actually written down all the teachers who did that, a lot of them, thank you. It's just, it's, you know, we moved to 73 and 1/2 very specifically. We didn't move to any other school district. We moved to Skokie from Chicago, like so many people, and we specifically came to this school district because of the schools. And so it's just been a pleasure to send my, both my kids through this school district. They're thriving, and they're thriving because of all the hard work of the staff in this school. So thank you to all of you who have worked with my, my kids over the years. All right, moving on. Next item up is superintendent update. Keely, I don't know if you have anything you wanted to highlight, or if it's all pretty self-explanatory.
I think it's all pretty self-explanatory. I'm gonna make up some time. Certainly, that's not fun and exciting compared to everything you all said, but I will help move this meeting along. All of the information items, the board has received, certainly if there's any questions, but I think most of them tonight, this is really Karen's show. Yep, but the department present, the department information is in the packet, and certainly this is gonna, this is gonna be your show, Karen. We talked about that. This is the business meeting show tonight, so we will move things along.
Yes, so as Keely said, if you want to read the updates about the administration, please go ahead and read those in the packet. I also, I'm sorry, I wanted to read out, I know that it's in here, but I did want to say, April is School Library Month, and libraries are my most favorite places in the whole entire world, so I will read this. Thank you to our library staff for curating collections that encourage growth in knowledge, helping students to develop literacy skills and cultural awareness, and providing materials which reflect the ideas and beliefs of different religious, social, political, historical, and ethnic groups and their contributions to the world, heritage, and culture. So at Meyer, Amy Kelly at McCracken, Beth Glazer and Heather Hagerty at McCracken, Tori Gomery, and Robert Henderson, thank you so much for all of your hard work. You do an amazing job with our libraries. April is also National Bilingual Multilingual Learner Advocacy Month, and as the populations of bilingual and multilingual learners grow, we recognize our multilingual learners, staff, students, and families, and thank you to our district multilingual coordinator, Lila Nelson, and the multilingual learning team for all that you do to support our students' success here at Meyer. Everyone's name is listed there. Thank you so much for all your hard work in our district. So I'm now gonna turn it over to Karen to do your thing.
Button. So we're moving to item H in the information items. It's the audit presentation, and we have our auditor from Whipley here to do that presentation for you. Also, sorry, before you start, you have the electronic versions in your board docs. You also have paper, actual bound copies of those things in front of you if you want to reference.
Good evening. Thank you for having me back again. My name is Scott Denzer. I'm a partner with Whipley specializing in the government assurance practice. I'm gonna go through some highlights of the report, but if anybody has any questions as I'm going, I'm gonna refer to some pages here and there, but please stop me if you have a question, and I'll try and answer to the best of my ability. So let's get right into it. The district again presented financial statements, or the annual comprehensive financial report, the ACFER. This is above and beyond the regular regulatory report that you have to do. Not a lot of districts do present all this information, so you should give yourself a pat on the back for putting all the information, taking the time to do it, and again, it's the most transparent financial statements a government, any type of government can, can, can produce. I'm pleased to, pleased to let you know that last year's ACFER was reviewed by the Association of School Business Officials for their, for their Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, and last year's 2003 report did receive the award. That's not an award related to any kind of financial or budgetary performance, it's just related to all the applicable items are properly presented within the covers of this ACFER document. We expect that 2024, if it gets submitted, that it'll receive the award again for, for this past year. Wanted to talk briefly on the audit opinion, this is on page one. The first page in the financial section is our audit opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion on the basic financial statements. Basically means we believe the basic financial statements and related notes to the financial statements are fairly stated in all material respects. One thing I do want to say is our opinion does not cover everything in the ACFER document. For instance, the introductory section or the management discussion and analysis and the statistical tables, the, you know, building information, that kind of stuff in the statistical pages, we do not audit that. We're auditing the basic financial statements, and there's paragraphs in the opinion that reference that. Briefly on the basic financial statements, these are start on page 12. 12 and 13 are government-wide financial statements. This takes all the funds of the district, sort of squeezes them into one column, and also reports capital assets, reports debt, bonded debt, pension, direct pension liabilities, OPEB liabilities, and the related deferred inflows and outflows to them. So any type of, every possible financial metric or measurement are included in these governmental-wide, government-wide financial statements, and it comes down to an equity or a net position. So the, the net position of the, of the district as of June 30, 2024, was just over $24 million. This was a little bit of a decrease from last year. It was at $31 million. It was, I think, most of that was related to some capital asset adjustments related to the buildings. The next set of financial statements, I want to skip to page 16. This is basically the income statement. This is where we report the fund. This is where we report the fund financial statements, and these are the statements that are probably most more familiar to everybody. These are the funds that are set up by ISBE that all districts in Illinois report. General funds consists of the ed, operation and maintenance, working cash and tort. Non-major funds are debt service, transportation, IMRF, fire prevention and safety. Based on government auditing standards, they're sort of combined up there. We do, after the notes to the financial statements, we do have detailed schedules and combining schedules if you want to break down the, you don't see the detail of each fund budget, the actual information. For the year ended June 30, 2024, the district did have, operated at a little bit of a deficit, almost $3.1 million deficit. If I take out the Capital Projects Fund and just focus on what we call the operating funds, that deficit is about, was about $1.4 million for June 30. One of the good things, though, about putting together the ACFER report is there are statistical tables in the back, ten-year tables, that we track this and report this stuff, and I'm pleased to announce that this doesn't seem like it's a continual thing, deficit spending. Some years it's up, down, up, down, but that's one thing to be aware of. You can't get into a structural deficit spend. That is not a, that is not a good thing, because your budgets go up every year, costs go up every year, the levy goes up every year, so if your fund balances are going down, that's not, that's not a good. But I don't see that here, and the good news is that you do have pretty healthy fund balances here. Definitely, you know, almost ninety percent fund balance to expenditures at the end of June, you know, June 2024. Remember, June is usually, is a pretty good month for cash and investments in the district. You got some early taxes that you collected, and you won't spend until the next fall. So it is a high, pretty high watermark, but still, you're starting in a good spot. The district, just talking about the long-term debt, and the district did pay down some bonded debt last year, about $1.2 million. It's holding, the balance is about 8.8 million in bonded debt last June. Looking at the agenda today, I know that you're just about to issue another issue of $7 million in working cash bonds, so that'll increase. I've talked to Karen. We'll work through that when those, when those close. I'll work with the district staff to make sure those adjustments are posted in there, and we get them in the financial statements correctly before the end of the year. Just want to talk briefly about some industry things, things I see, you know, working with school districts pretty much full-time now, and looking a little bit into the future and maybe some more, a little bit of warning signs here. One is that, you know, ESER funded, the ESER funding, this is the remnants of the COVID monies that has all been spent through, so any dollars that you got out of those programs will no longer be available moving forward, so you can't rely on, you know, on those funds in the future. Inflation is still a concern. The inflation rate may, may have came down, but it doesn't seem prices drop with it, and, you know, with the current, you know, political climate, who knows where that's gonna go? Talking about political climate, I know you don't, you don't rely heavily on federal funding for a significant portion of your budget, but so, but who knows what's gonna happen with the federal piece of the funding? It seems like it changes day to day. And there's also significant, because we're in Illinois, I always briefly want to talk a little bit about, you know, the pension funding and how it relates, and we have put in some supplemental information is required, and the TRS information is reported on page fifty-five and fifty-six. The district's liability for the, and teachers, the TRS system covers all your certified staff. The district's portion of liability is about $900,000. And before I move forward, I just want to say that there's nothing, as a district or as a board, that you can affect these numbers, because this is a caution plan. You paid what you were supposed to do. The teachers, you know, contributed what they did, and the board paid, and, you know, and the state's supposed to pick up the rest. So that being said, the, you know, the state's portion of the liability, the TRS liability is about seventy-seven and a half million dollars, just to your district alone. You know, if you think about this, you know, if you look at the numbers statewide for all districts, it's over, and this would be as of almost two years ago, the number's over $80 billion in liability, and it's been that way consistently if we look at the ten-year data. The funding ratio has always been right around forty percent, plus or minus a little bit, right around there. It hasn't, hasn't really moved. Like I said, I just want to bring it up, because those are real numbers. There's nothing the board can effectuate with them. Good news is the IMRF fund, which covers your non-certified staff, is, that's funded just by employees and the school district alone. That one's funded very well, ninety-four percent last year. A couple of years ago was over a hundred percent, so it's a different design plan, totally different how it works, but that's, that's, that one is in really good shape there. Just want to mention that in addition to this ACFER report, we also prepare a regular regulatory report. It's the same report that all, for your regulatory body, Illinois State Board of Education, all districts file the same electronic. It's an Excel workbook, and we did fill that out, submit it, so your regulatory filing with ISBE is complete. The district, well, as part of that filing, it computes a financial profile score summary. The district this year ended up with a 3.55 out of a 4.0 scale. That's still a recognition status. The only areas, there's, there's a couple ratios that you got less than four, that would be long-term debt margin remaining, that's your bonded debt related to your taxable EAV, was a three out of four, and also expenditures, the revenue ratio was a three out of four, and that's a function of your deficit spend last year, last year. So still a recognition status. I still, you still have healthy fund balance, and I think you're in a good, good spot moving forward from here, considering all those potential unknowns in the future. So with that being said, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have, if any.
Anybody have any questions?
It's sort of a quick question. Thank you for your time, and it's really helpful to see all this relayed. I know we pointed out quite a few numbers that the district doesn't really have control over, that these are, they are what they are, it's in and it's out. Would there be any theoretical metric that the district could hypothetically have control over, and if the answer is a simple no, that's okay as well?
Well, you can control your budget and how you spend, and your levy. That's what you have control. What you do not have control of is Teachers Retirement Pension Fund, the OPEB funding, those things are sort of out of your control. They're included in your financial statements, in the government-wide financial statements and the notes, and the required supplemental information, but, you know, you definitely have, you know, control over your own budget, your spending, your, you know, your teacher negotiation contract, so, you know, but it's all, you know, all that combines in the government-wide financial statements in here. There's, you know, some pieces that you just don't, but, you know, the fund financial statements for the individual funds is where I think you have your, you know, where you can do it, and those are the important ones for the district anyways. That's what management uses, you know, day-to-day to track their budget, to make sure you're on track, to make sure, you know, you're not overspending, so that's what you can affect.
Thank you. Any other questions? Karen, did you want to mention anything, or y'all good?
So covering like what we ended up with the deficit, and that, you know, half of that was inside of our capital projects, and then the other half was kind of split between our other working funds. So that was, I figured that was a question you guys would have, and he answered that for you, so, but if you have any others, I'm happy to answer.
No, thank you very much for your presentation.
Great. Thank you for having me. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Why am I having trouble paying? Seems like, is this in a different order than it normally is? Huh?
That was in information item H, so you'd be on I and then committee report.
Whatever, it doesn't really matter. It just all seems confusing. Okay, do you want to say anything, Bushra, about the Board Equity Committee, or Bingo, or?
We had Bingo last week, great turnout, lots of prizes, and we're grateful for all those who used that time and platform to fill out our superintendent search survey.
Member Nelson and TDSC reports.
Yes, we met the week after our last meeting here. There were several presentations to outstanding teachers that were recognized through ISBE and national groups. We talked about our, our district space needs, and we have decided against going with the All Saints School, so we're back looking into that. And those are the high points.
All right, thank you. The PTO report is in the packet, and I'll just say that it sounds like Taste of Seventy... Well, this is another huge success, so thank you so much for the PTO, for all your hard work on events this month, and then also in anticipation of all the work I know you'll do around staff recognition, so thanks so much to our PTO for their hard work. All right, I need a motion to approve policies for adoption.
I'll make a motion to approve policies for adoption.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Nelson. I need a roll call vote.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
Great, the motion to approve policies for adoption passes. Thank you. I need a motion to approve the audit as presented.
I will make a motion to approve the audit as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Member Mercer, seconded by Member Jacob. We'll just go ahead and do a roll call vote.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The motion to approve the audit as presented passes. I need a motion to approve EBC insurance program as presented.
I move that we approve EBC insurance program as presented.
Motion made by Member Nelson, seconded by Member Jacob. Do you have anything you want to say on this, Karen, or does anybody have any questions about the insurance?
I will just say it's inside the memo, but we did make, the committee asked for two plan changes, so we changed some things inside the PPO plan to save money on that plan, so it gave us a percentage of our premiums back, so, but the committee decided that as a whole, and so that's coming to you, but that's part of what you're approving, is that change in the plan.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The motion to approve EBC insurance program as presented passes. I need a motion to approve summer school fees for summer 2025 as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve summer school fees for summer 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Nelson. Are there any questions about the summer school fees? Okay, roll call.
Roll call. Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha?
Yes.
The motion to approve the summer school fees for summer 2025 passes. Okay, I need a motion to approve the resolution providing the issue of, providing the issue of not to exceed $7 million general obligation limited tax school bond series 2025 of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a district, of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on the bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed $7 million general obligation limited tax school bond series 2025 of the district for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund of the district, providing for the levy of a direct annual tax to pay the principal and interest on the bonds, and authorizing the proposed sale of the bonds to the purchaser thereof.
Second.
Well done. Motion made by Member Amawala, seconded by Member Jacob. Do you have anything to say?
We have Elizabeth Hennessy here, if you guys have any questions on this, but we've been talking, we've been discussing this ongoing, so if there are no questions, then I'll let you proceed.
Does anybody have any questions for Elizabeth? No? Okay. Thank you for coming. In case we did have questions, we appreciate that. Roll call, please.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna say the motion to approve the resolution passes. I'm not reading all that again. All right, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Mercer. Roll call.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
Yes.
The motion to approve the consent agenda passes. It's that time of the meeting again where we get to have public comment, so if you'd like to make any public comment, please go to the microphone, introduce yourself, and remember, public comment is restricted to three minutes. All right, calendar review. As we mentioned earlier, there are more meetings. So next week, we will have a special board meeting at 7:00 PM here, where we will have HYA, our, our firm that's helping with the superintendent search. They will present their survey findings and the leadership profile. We will then have another special board meeting on April 22 that I think is actually a closed meeting. It's like, will open, but it's actually a closed meeting, where HYA will present their, their candidates. We will just be hearing about the candidates. We will not be interviewing the candidates at that point. We then have special board meetings to be announced regarding interviewing those candidates. Those will be closed meetings. I will say, although everyone got a communication about this in the district, that those board members who were elected at the April 1st meeting, at the April 1st election, congratulations, by the way, will be a part of those closed meetings, assuming they have completed and submitted their certification for the Open Meetings Act training, as they are closed meetings. We then have a proposed finance committee meeting, April 30 at 7:00 PM, and the official board reorganization meeting will be Wednesday, May 7, here at 7:00 PM. That is the meeting in which the outgoing board will depart, and the new board will be seated, and there will be a reorganization of the board leadership at that meeting, and then our regularly scheduled second Tuesday of the month meeting will be May 13. So that is our schedule for now. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Member Nelson, nope, made by Member Jacob, seconded by Member Nelson. Roll call, please.
Member Amawala?
Yes.
Member Jacob?
Yes.
Member Miller?
Yes.
Member Kelly Nelson?
Yes.
Member Mercer?
Yes.
Member Latasha Nelson?
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for attending.